Okay, we are now live.
All right. Let's give a couple of minutes for people to come in. Now, there's Tara, good.
Sorry.
It's okay, understood. All right, I'm going to get started. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 6th, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on February 26, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on February 26, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Council President Phil George, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I guess so, well, Mayor, thank you. Everyone, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brohm Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yeah.
Councilman George.
Present.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair.
Here.
All right, do any council members have any questions on the agenda items?
Yes, I do. So for item 16B, so we are voting on the on the resolution as as is, because I know last work session, there were a lot of questions and different things that needed to be ironed out.
So, yes, at the last work session, we discussed not rewriting the resolution for the legislators, but to put the resolution up for a vote. And if there are any comments or questions, they can accompany the our resolution in a cover letter, and we can talk a little bit more about that when we right before the vote on it.
Okay, so in a wait, in a cover letter, whoever has concerns, you mean, individually?
So you may recall that at the last meeting, there was a discussion about what, we didn't have the correct terminology for it, something along the lines of frivolous or nuisance complainer. That still may remain a concern amongst some of the council members. And if it does, we can, I'm going to call for a vote on the resolution as it's currently written. But the the we can ask the legislature to please look into whatever concerns, you know, the frivolous, what do they call it?
Habitual, whatever.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Complainer, if that's the word.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
No, never mind, that's okay.
Okay. And are there any other agenda item questions amongst the council members?
None.
Yep. Okay. Then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular work session meeting until February 16th, 2021, as distributed. May I have a moment?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on with our council report. I'm going to call on each of you as you appear on my screen. And so, Councilmember Matt Hirsch, you're up first.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Caught me off guard, sorry. Let me change my screen. It's the Zoom era. So, good evening, everybody, thank you. I'm Matt Hirsch, I chair the I chair the Borough, the council's Arts and Recreation Committee. And I work in conjunction, I work in partnership with the with the Community Center and the Rec Department. And you may have seen the announcements the last few weeks that the Borough is now providing free COVID testing at the Community Center three days a week. It's very exciting, and I encourage anybody who is who has to go to work, who has to go to school, who is out in the who's out in the world by necessity to stop by and get your COVID test. We had 18 participants yesterday on the first day, which is terrific. And we've received numerous calls today with additional questions about testing to today and yesterday. So people are really interested in the service, which is essential, because the demand really has to be there in order for the company that we've partnered with to continue providing the testing. You know, with with Bartle Elementary School and Irving Primary School headed back to five-day in-person learn. I think it's essential and easy. And that's for families, for students, minors under 18, just have to be there with a parent or guardian. And we hopefully won't have to provide the service for too long, because you may have heard today that President Biden said that Johnson &amp; Johnson would boost its vaccine production, allowing the US to produce enough vaccines for every adult in the US by the end of May, while making a fresh push to vaccinate school staff over the next month. And you may have heard that Governor Murphy announced yesterday that school faculty and staff would be prioritized for a vaccine also by March 15. If you need a COVID test, the company that we've partnered with, Ridgewood Diagnostic Diagnostic Lab will be onsite at the Highland Park Community Center at 220 South Sixth Avenue to administer COVID-19 tests on the following dates and times. Mondays, 10 to 4. Wednesdays, noon to 4. And Fridays, 10 to 1. It's a nasal swab. It is as pleasant as that sounds. I can but it's but it's very quick. I got my results negative, thankfully, in 24 hours over text. So it was a really great, efficient service. I was in and out of there, and I know several other members of the council got tested as well, as well as staff. And there is no cost to participants. Tests will either be billed directly to your insurance company or billed to the CARES to CARES Act funding if you're uninsured. And participants are encouraged to pre-register prior to coming to the testing site, but it's not required. Walk-ins are welcome, and I understand that we had several walk-ins yesterday. I was, I was skulking around the 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 Community Center yesterday, just to after I got my test, just to see how it was going. And it looked like that there were no issues, which made me really happy. If you have insurance, please bring a photo ID and your insurance card. And if you're uninsured, just bring a form of identification. If you have any questions, refer to the FAQ page on the Borough's website, www.hpboro.com. And if you have additional questions, contact Emma Missy And I just want to give a shout out to Emma and Terry for helping to facilitate this initiative. It's it is very, very important. And that's my report right now, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Tara Canavera, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, I do, thank you. The Board of Health would like to remind, as more people are being vaccinated, we'd just like to remind people to still wear your masks when out in public. Just because you're vaccinated does not mean that you cannot carry the virus to other people. Also, March is Women's History Month. But March is also National Nutrition Month. And with that in mind, I'd like to remind everybody that the food, the community food pantry is open the second and fourth Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM. And again, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And on the Saturdays following the Thursday, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. And any donations can be made through their wish list. Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry is still open every Tuesday at the Zone 16 Center from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And donations can be made by mailing a check to Borough Hall with a memo that Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Between these two programs, we're still serving over 300 families. We've had new families register at both programs the last week. Also, any school-aged children in the district, you do not have to live in the district. You just have to be, have a child between, I'm sorry, don't have to go to school in district if you're at a district placement. Any child from the ages of 3 to 18 can get lunch at the cafeteria Monday through Friday at the high school cafeteria from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. And also on Fridays, they give meals for the weekend. The Mental Health Commission will be holding its first event on March 24th at 4:00 PM. The event is grieving our losses together. It's not just about grieving deaths, it's about grieving all the things that we've lost this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It will be a Zoom meeting, and a link will be available on the Borough website. And also, again, to remind anybody who is having a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. The hotlines for Middlesex County are Rutgers Behavioral, University Behavioral Health hotline And the Raritan Medical Center hotline is 732-442-3794. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. The the Community Development Block Grant Committee will be holding their public hearing on applicants March 4th at 6:00 PM. Meeting was rescheduled from February 23rd. The Finance Committee will be meeting March 11th, 4:00 PM. Meeting will be noticed with details. Did you know that you can sign up voluntarily for paperless water and sewer billing? Residents can enroll to receive their quarterly utility bill via email. If you choose to not if you choose not to enroll, you will continue to receive a paper postcard bill. You can, the form is on the Borough website under Departments and Tax. Questions, if you have any questions, please call 732-819-3788. Once again, this is voluntary. COVID hate crimes against Asian Americans are on the rise once again. In recent weeks, celebrities and influencers have spoken out after several disturbing incidents went viral on social media. Here are just some of the recent reported attacks. An 84-year-old Thai immigrant in San Francisco, California, died last month after being violently shoved to the ground during his morning walk. In Oakland, California, a 91-year-old senior was shoved to the pavement from behind. An 89-year-old Chinese woman was slapped and set on fire by two people in Brooklyn, New York. A stranger on the New York subway slashed a 61-year-old Filipino-American American passenger's face with a box cutter. The key word here is reported. I encourage our AAPI residents to report any form of abuse to the Highland Park Police Department immediately. And on a lighter note, today is National Read Across America Day. Read a book you've read before, you may discover that it has a new meaning to you since the last time you read it. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Good evening all. Just a few things. Some wonderful things have been going on over at our teen center. Zone 16 Center continues to make a track and do wonderful things. Last month, they had Alpha Aviation that came in, and Alpha Aviation Program came in, and they had 12 people that signed up for to learn, to learn how to get involved in aviation, how to fly drones, and how they're creating a drone program, which they're going to be doing over at the Zone 16 Center. So they're doing drones, and they're going to learn how to fly planes, some of them. So that's, that's really, really exciting for what's happening over there. Kudos to Ashton. And also, there is a, they are in need of cultural books. So if you have any cultural books laying around and you want to donate, please donate them to the teen center. They also had a former Highland Park basketball player that came back and to town, and he's helping out at the Zone 16 Center as well. And he started a sponsorship for bank accounts for four students. So they came back, they're doing, they're playing games and everything else, basketball games. But they've also took it a step further. And the road to entrepreneurship and being financially sound and stable is to understand and how your finances work. And not only are they doing the financial literacy workshop, but they have taken the students in under their wings, and they're showing them how to be financially stable and also sponsoring their first bank account. So that's awesome. So again, I'm very happy to see what's going on over at the teen center. So I talked about the drone, the cultural approach with books that they're looking for. So if you have books you want to donate, please do so. And the bank account. So they're doing some really awesome things over there, which I'm very, very, very happy to see. Our next community forum is coming up, so please stay tuned. You'll be seeing information on our police community forum. You'll be seeing information on our Facebook page, our Highland Park page. So please stay tuned for that one. Also, I must, I must also say that I am happy that we're celebrating Women's History Month. And as Stephanie said, it might take a different look at, looking at stuff as we read about the great women in history and where we have and how far we have traveled. We can look at women such as Jane Austen and Frank Maio Angelo, Queen Elizabeth, Catherine the Great, Sir Journey is Truth, Rosa Parks, and Malawa Yosa Sai. I think I'm pronouncing her name correctly. And just, just a few, just a few of these women that we can all take a moment to read about them, understand their struggles, and how we can also have takeaway. But this year, we've seen our first African-American woman to be Vice President of the United States. We've come a long way, we're cracking that glass ceiling, and we're hoping the next time around, we'll crack it wide open. So I'm happy to, that we're celebrating this, this month for women accomplishment. And I know there's a lot more that will be accomplished. Thank you, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
Very brief one. I really want to give a just a short update on the downtown redevelopment process. As you all know, we've had a great deal of public feedback about the process, about the discussions. We are continually working very diligently with our professional staff on doing the write-up of those discussions and the input into a written, formalized redevelopment plan. So the, as you know, we're, we're at the beginning of this process. We had at, at one point, hoped that we would be ready to deliver the full document at the next redevelopment meeting on March 9th. But rather than rush it, we've decided that it's, it's still needs some, some work. And so we're going to take the time to do that. And so it's, it's not because, you know, there's any new things coming into it. It's just sort of shaping it together as, as when writing a document, sometimes it can take a lot longer than than you expect. But we're taking the time because we want to make sure that we are putting the issues all out on the table for the next round of public hearings and public input, which will be coming later in the month. So that's really the update. Didn't seem to make sense to have a redevelopment meeting with no new information on the table. And as a result, it we will, we will continue to work on the redevelopment plan documents and distribute those when they're ready, and then we'll move forward after that. So that's my report.
Thank you. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor, just briefly. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Hirsch and the administration for setting up the COVID-19 testing. It's very difficult lately online trying to get registered. This is very convenient. I also got tested yesterday, I think I was right after Councilman Hirsch. And aside from the, you know, the tickling up in your nose, it makes you want to cry and sneeze and tickle at the same time. The staff was young, they were courteous, they were enthusiastic. It was very convenient, it was in and out in five minutes. In less than 24 hours, you get a text, a text result. Fortunately, again, it was negative. Just briefly, on DPW, we have set up the committee that I spoke about at the last couple of meetings regarding this protocols for snow plowing. I did speak with fellow council members, Hirsch and Canavera, today. We decided to break out the particular areas that were of most concern. And we'll be reporting in on those on Thursday. We have added a lot of extra DPW meetings specifically devoted to snow plowing. And so we'll be catching up with that. The Native Plant Sanctuary received a $500 grant from the State Plant, Native Plant Society for $500, and they are also running their second statewide sale as a distribution center as they did in the fall. It is a contactless exchange. They had over 100 people pick up to drive-in, drive-out. It is prepaid by online, so there's no exchange of cash. And the plants are prepackaged and loaded into your trunk. So it's a contactless. It was so successful that the Plant Society asked to do it again at our Native Plant Sanctuary, and that'll be on March 13th. I'm trying to get the contact information through the Native Plant Society, which is the contact for it. And hopefully, we can get that posted. It was very successful last year. Environmental Commission meets again tonight, I'm sorry, tomorrow night for the regular meeting. We've been discussing the stormwater changes, which are being worked on to be adopted. There are the mandatory state and federal law changes to stormwater management. Our Borough Attorney is almost finished formulating those. All towns in the state have to adopt those, it's not just Highland Park. And they're also going to be pushing for becoming more electric vehicle friendly in the coming year. Also, we had reviewed the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership Proposal, which is on tonight's agenda. Part, the last part, that tends to be less visible because it's in some ways, the most important. But in, in the legislation, it's the smallest, is the education and public outreach. The Lower Raritan Watershed has made a proposal to do it very inexpensively and possibly at no cost to the Borough. And that was approved by both Public Works and the Environmental Commission, that's on the agenda. Finally, just briefly, I attended the monthly library board meeting. It was, I had a meeting before that, but when I logged in, it was almost done. But the library just has done an annual report reporting on the 2020 experience in running a library and trying to keep up with us. And actually, some of the new programs that they designed as a coping mechanism have turned out to be very successful, such as curated books, curated book pickup. And I'm hoping that the annual report, which we did preview last Monday, will be available shortly. And I encourage everyone to read it once it gets posted. And I believe that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
The only item I would, just, just to follow up on what Councilman Hale mentioned with regard to the redevelopment, the regularly scheduled redevelopment meeting on the 9th. Just to be plain, we have canceled that meeting to continue the work, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep everybody posted. But I don't know if I actually heard him say it was canceled. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, but that the work is underway on the draft. And we hope in the coming weeks to have it, to be able to share with everybody.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. So I do have a few things to let everyone know about. First, I want to talk about a local hero. Highland Park residents continue to show how much they care about their neighbors in Highland Park and beyond. This past week, I was inspired to read about the efforts of a Highland Park resident, Jeff Sushon, whose remarkable personal initiative was covered in a story on CNN last month. Despite the fact that he isn't currently working due to a health, due to health concerns related to the pandemic, he saw a clear need and responded generously to it. He took the federal stimulus check he received in the spring and used it to purchase over 30,000 face masks for those of limited means. He worked with the local soup kitchen, Elijah's Promise, homeless shelters, churches, and food pantries to distribute the masks. Jeff understood that each person who has a mask doesn't just benefit her or himself, but also everyone they come in contact with. A special thank you, Jeff, for your exceptional generosity and your firm commitment to public health. We are very grateful for your efforts. Now, just a little COVID update. As of Monday, March 1st, the total weekly numbers for confirmed COVID-19 cases in Highland Park is 21. This is the lowest weekly total we have had since November of 2020. February's monthly cases are roughly half of what we have seen last month and are very close to the numbers we saw back in April 2020. Through March 1st, the county reports 809 total cumulative COVID-positive cases in town since the pandemic began. Sadly, Highland Park has one additional COVID-related death that was reported on February 25th. This brings total COVID-19 deaths in town to 16. Our flags fly at half-mast in honor of them and all Americans we lost during this pandemic. Though the decline in the number of our positive cases for February is certainly encouraging, and more and more residents have been able to procure vaccine appointments, we are not out of the woods with this pandemic yet. Please continue to be vigilant about this virus. Wash your hands often, wear a mask when you leave your home, and of course, stay six feet socially distant from others indoors and outdoors. Several council members have already mentioned the fact that we do have free COVID testing. I just want to give the I just want to give the dates again. They, this is being conducted at the community center on Mondays from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Wednesdays from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and on Mondays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I found out today some good news that the, um, DOT, the Department of Transportation, has just approved an extension of our popular town tables dining on North Fourth and South Third Avenues. The extension runs through May 31st, 2021. And as the weather improves, yes, spring is coming. Please patronize our downtown restaurants and cafes. Join your friends in safe conversation and socialization spaced six feet apart at, at our town tables. And finally, February was Black History Month, and as several council members mentioned, March is Women's History Month. And so I wanted to recognize one of our residents who has accomplished, her accomplishments reflect the aspirations of both these months. Danell Morgan is the daughter of Bruce and Deborah Morgan. She began dance studies at the Dance Exchange School of the Performing Arts. To expand her technique, Danell enrolled in the pre-professional scholarship program at the Alley Dance School at the age of 16. She became one of the first African-American women to be selected as a Radio City Rockette. Danell performed in the Christmas spectacular starring the Radio City Rockettes for over 12 years and has been the face of the Rockettes in various print and commercial advertising campaigns. As a Rockette, she has performed for President Obama, Oprah Winfrey. She's been in Dick Clark's Rockin' New York, New Year's Eve Celebration, the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, Wendy Williams Show, and the Today Show. She's appeared in many magazines such as Vanity Fair, Marie Clark, Marie Claire, Time Out New York, and has had her own feature in the New York Times Sunday Routine. Danell is also proud to be the recipient of the 2017 NAACP New Jersey State Conference Performing Arts Award for Achievements in the Arts. In the spring of 2019, Danell led a diversity drive to help recruit more women of color to the Rockettes, and her work on, in this effort was profiled in the New York Times. I know her parents beam with pride at Danell's achievements. I'm here to say the entire borough does too. Congratulations, Danell Morgan. Okay. It is now time for the first public discussion session. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per person. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The borough clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure. I'm sorry, folks, my, I just lost you. Can you see me?
Yes.
That's encouraging. It's kind of weird looking at a blank screen, though, so if you would give me one moment.
Dance like nobody's watching you.
I'm coming back in.
Should we all turn off our screens? Just that'd be kind of funny.
That would be mean.
Welcome back.
Yes.
There's no one here.
Okay, so you all know this is 21 minutes, uh, as a maximum, three minutes per person. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in the application. The borough administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, uh, we have a number of hands just for the public's knowledge. We have 27 attendees and actually 12 raised hands, so we may or may not be able to get through everybody uh, at this point, but we do, as the mayor say, have the second public participation, uh, later in the meeting. First up, Rebecca Cypress, please just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. This is Rebecca Cypress. I live at 52 Brookdale Court in Highland Park. Uh, Mayor and council members, I'm speaking regarding 32184 Resolution in Support of Senate Bill S2656, Assembly Bill A5301, which requires access to law enforcement disciplinary records as government records. Thank you very much for bringing this resolution to a vote. With your vote of yes tonight, you are showing your support of this important legislation that will bring New Jersey up to speed with 29 other states, moving us toward greater accountability and transparency in policing and ensuring that we are responsive to the over 100 organizations and individuals who are advocating for the passage of this bill statewide. It is also important to note that local groups Anti-Racism in Action, Black Community Watchline, and the Middlesex Black Jewish Coalition have been collecting signatures on an open letter to Senator Deignan, Assemblyman Stanley, and Assemblyman Kara Benjic to continue to urge them to support and co-sponsor this legislation. At this time, this open letter includes over 110 signatures. Your support of this resolution is critical to moving this bill forward. I would note that Senate Bill 2656, Assembly Bill 5301 is common sense legislation that would bring New Jersey up to speed with 29 other states who are more transparent than New Jersey when it comes to police disciplinary records. New Jersey is one of the few states where police disciplinary records are kept confidential. States like Florida and Ohio and more than a dozen others make both sustained and unsustained complaints public. No harm has flowed as a result. On the contrary, this practice increases public trust in the process, which is to the benefit of both the public and of police officers. By making police disciplinary records subject to the Open Public Records Act, the public is able to see that police are responding to complaints, investigating properly, and being transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Next is Sonia Hedlam. Sonia, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you so much. Yes, this is Sonia Hedlam at 133 Benner Street. Um, I'm gonna follow up on the same topic that Rebecca Cypress was speaking on and would just like to add the point that making police disciplinary records public is needed to ensure greater accountability and transparency in policing, but also the criminal justice system. And I'm not sure if you all are aware of this, but grand juries often never know that an officer who killed a civilian had a history of excessive force and other complaints. That means the lawyers that are actually representing the person in that case has no access in a civil court to those records. Furthermore, judges and juries are often also kept in the dark in involving a case where there has been a record of misconduct, which would be important factors, as we all can imagine, in the assessment of innocence and guilt. This secrecy can result in wrongful convictions. In fact, it has. The Innocence Project does a lot of work on that subject and contributes to mass incarceration. I'd be happy to provide you all with a link to the Innocence Project that gives more information about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sonia.
Uh, next up is Michelle McFadden-Dunica. Um, I'm going to have to promote you to a panelist, so be prepared that your camera may come on, Michelle. I've done this before, so I just want to give you a warning. Because of the version of Zoom you have, I have to do that. All right. Michelle? Are you there? Michelle, can you? I'm sorry, Michelle, we're having some technical difficulties. I'm gonna have to go to the next person. Mary Karan, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Mary Karan at 7 Cleveland Avenue. Um, Mayor and council members, I'm also, um, speaking to urge you to vote yes for the, for the resolution in support of both the Senate Bill and the Assembly Bill. And I want to speak about concerns that have been raised about privacy. To address those concerns, the bill expressly provides protection for law enforcement in that certain information pertaining to the law enforcement officer or the officer's family, the complainant or the complainant's family, and a witness or the witness's family be redacted to sufficiently protect those individuals while providing transparency. So currently, when you file an Oprah request, redactions occur on printed documents, videos, and audio files. So we can suggest sample language that could be used, like we have provided you with a full copy of the audio and the video redacted to remove whatever the reason is for the redaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Next is Cassandra Oliveras Moreno. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Cassandra Oliveras Moreno, and I'm at 53 Lincoln Ave. Council and, and Mayor, I thank you so much for, um, for the opportunity and want to reiterate that the Senate Bill 2656, Assembly Bill 5301 has been endorsed by over 100 organizations and individuals impacted by police misconduct in our state. And the supporters include the Hotel Trades Council, ACLU New Jersey, Local Black Lives Matter, and NAACP chapters, members of law enforcement, faith-based leaders, and the National Innocence Project. And locally here in Highland Park, these include Anti-Racism in Action, Black Community Watchline, Central Jersey Coalition Against Endless War, Middlesex Black Jewish Coalition, Neighbor Corps Reentry Services, the New Brunswick Area NAACP Chapter, RCHP Affordable Housing Corp., and the Reform Church of Highland Park. And, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra.
Oops, hold on. Excuse me one second, Mayor. I, I was trying to call on Rubee Duncan. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Rubee Duncan. I live, um, in Lawrence Ave. And again, thank you for letting me speak, Mayor and council members. I'm also speaking on the same topic and building on what, uh, others, particularly Sonia, has said before regarding this bill. I, I want to point out that the transparency and accountability is important, not only, uh, in terms of policing, but also earns the public's trust, which leads members of the public to be more likely to cooperate with investigations, report crimes, ensure that police departments have proper resources to perform their jobs safely. Um, and additionally, the transparency directives would greatly benefit officers of color and women officers, because it would allow law enforcement to identify racial and gender disparities in how major discipline has been imposed upon, uh, officers. So this benefits both sides. And that is all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Ruthie.
Uh, next up, Dan Batty. Please state your name and address.
This is Dan Beatty. I'm at 304 Montgomery Street. I also want to speak on the resolution. According to the Internal Affairs Policy and Procedural Manual, one of the areas that often involves internal affairs is an employee's fitness for duty. This is not exclusively an internal affairs issue, and officer's fitness may be impacted for reasons other than misconduct. For instance, an officer may become unfit for duty because of a medical problem unrelated to the job. Fitness for Duty records, which was raised as a concern in the work agenda meeting two weeks ago, would fall under the exemption in Senate Bill 2656, Assembly Bill 5301 for the, quote, "the medical history and detailed medical information of any law enforcement officer or any complainant." Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Looks like, sorry, I'm coming up. Here we go. Antoinette Gabaton-Moss. Please just state your name and address.
Hi, thank you. This is Reverend Antoinette Gabaton-Moss, pastor of Trinity United Methodist Church, and I live on Montgomery Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As co-chair of the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council, I'm really glad to see the resolution in support of Senate Bill Number 2656, Assembly Bill Number 5301 will come to a vote this evening. On February 8th, members of the Advisory Council voted unanimously to support this important resolution, and I'd also like to share that several law enforcement coalition groups support this bill. The National Coalition of Latino Officers, which is headquartered in New Jersey, is publicly supporting this bill. And so is the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, a nonprofit organization comprised of law enforcement officers, prosecutors, and others across the country. A group of LEAP law enforcement in Florida and Ohio, both places that have open internal affairs records, recently wrote Governor Murphy to express their support for this bill, stating, quote, "We believe that transparency of police misconduct records is benefiting law enforcement in our state and would do the same in New Jersey," end quote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Antoinette.
All right, uh, next is John Valeri. Please state your name and address.
Um, yes, uh, John Valeri, uh, 106 South Sixth Avenue. I'd also like to add, uh, something in regards to, you know, things like police accountability along with, you know, things that happen in the courts, because, uh, when I was on jury duty for the first time, which was back in, uh, 2012, one of the questions I was asked, which excused me from jury duty because I answered no to it, was would I take a police officer's word over a witness? And I clearly stated no. Because, um, you never, because regardless of the circumstances, you never know whether the officer is lying or not. And if the officer has a history of lying, saying, oh, I didn't do this, whether he or she is on duty or not, I mean, you don't know, especially if the officer has a history of complaints, especially excessive force, especially since there was an incident that involved an officer, not in Highland Park, but in another town, where he had to go through a test because he had his 11th excessive force complaint, and because of that, he set his higher-ups' house on fire. And because of that, now the officer is in jail. So we need to make sure that within not just the town, but within the system itself, that, you know, officers are accountable and that there's good relations to a point where we have each other's trust one way or the other.
Thank you, John.
All right, see, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm getting confused because these participants know how to lower their own hands sometimes, and then they, they throw me off. Michael Stalka, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening. My name is Michael Stalka, and I live at 60 Cedar Avenue. Uh, so, um, I would also like to speak, uh, in favor of, uh, the resolution under Agenda Item 16B. And I was hoping to speak to, um, uh, cost concerns related to this bill. There's no reason to think that, uh, this bill would cause additional Oprah requests. And, uh, it should actually make, uh, life easier for custodians because it takes away some of the ambiguity that exists now, where there's like this balancing act about, um, uh, whether an Oprah request, uh, meets that, like, public interest, privacy balance. Um, instead, uh, the custodian will just have to, um, redact, uh, the information that is required to be redacted under, uh, under the law, and it, it takes under the law, and it takes it takes away some of that guessing game. So with that, thank you very much for your time, and I hope you all vote for that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next up, Peter Spool. Just state your name and address for the record.
This is Peter Spool. I live at 146 Graham Street here in Highland Park. Mayor and council, I would also like to speak to the resolution recommending to the Assembly and Senate that they pass Senate Bill 2656 and Assembly Bill 5301. I'd like to speak to the current situation and how that interferes, that lack of transparency interferes with some things. As it stands now, police departments' internal affairs units are the only entities that can access complaints filed against officers and how they were handled. Residents don't have access to them in order to understand how an internal affairs investigation was completed. So when when someone files a complaint, they never really know how it's played out and what the result was. And in addition, elected officials, including the mayor, including you, Mayor, don't have access to police disciplinary files. In order to hold accountable police officers, they are responsible for overseeing. Not even police officers themselves can access internal affairs in order to see if discipline is being administered in an equitable way within their own department. Opening police disciplinary records would not only benefit the public, but it would also benefit police officers directly, as well as our local elected officials. It would allow them to see if disciplinary action is fairly administered throughout their department. Thank you. I hope you will vote in support of that resolution.
Thank you, Peter.
Mayor, by my account, we have four minutes left and two speakers left with hands raised. Next up, Jessica Hudson. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Hudson. I'm at 304 Montgomery Street. So in the work agenda at the last council meeting, several council members expressed a concern related to nuisance complaints. So I thought it would be helpful to kind of analyze the data within our own community related to what we can actually see, which is not very much, but it's the number of internal complaints. So an analysis of Highland Park Police Department's internal affairs summary point reports from 2010 to 2019 show that out of 130 total internal affairs complaints filed, only 12 were unfounded or frivolous nuisance complaints. This means that in a given year, there are between zero to two complaints that the police have decided are false or completely unfounded. When it comes to concerns of frivolous or nuisance complaints, transparency actually benefits law enforcement, because the complaints would be public under S-2656, as well as the investigation files. And the public would be able to review the complaint and the file and see for themselves that the complaint was totally frivolous and the situation was investigated properly. Right now, the complainant can file the complaint, speak to the press about it, but then there's no release of records to show that the complaint was properly investigated and found to be frivolous. It's all a secret, which keeps police officers from clearing their name and reporters from being able to verify allegations. And I think possibly a more valid concern is just how few internal affairs complaints filed by individuals are not sustained. So in that same 10-year period I mentioned previously, zero of four complaints of excessive force have been sustained. Zero of 18 differential treatment complaints have been sustained. And only four of 41 demeanor complaints have been sustained. Currently, we have no way of knowing anything about these complaints, how they were investigated, and why they were not sustained. So I look forward to, you know, I hope that you can vote yes on this important resolution, because it's clear that it's needed in bringing transparency into internal affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our administrator, are we out of time?
Well, we have like two minutes in one hand, so it's your decision.
So let's just do the last ten.
Okay, great. And I, again, this is Michelle McFadden-Dina Cola, and we had this issue before. I hope we can make it work. I'm having to promote you to a panelist. There you go. But beware, your camera may come on, so just, I'll stop your video. Here we go. Now you can unmute yourself and state your name.
Thank you very much. My name is Michelle McFadden-Dina Cola, and I'm at 118 South Second Avenue in Highland Park. I would like to say that Attorney General Greewall believes that New Jersey needs to end its outlier status and move toward greater openness. So I'm speaking in support of the resolution, and thank you so much for letting me speak. In June 15, 2020, Attorney General Greewall issued a directive that would require future disclosure of merely the names of officers who've been subject to major discipline. Furthermore, the state police and other state law enforcement agencies would be required to make a retroactive disclosure of those officers who had received major discipline for the past excuse me, 20 years. The Attorney General also gave county and municipal departments the discretion to make retroactive disclosures. While the AG's directive was an earnest attempt to enhance law enforcement transparency, days after it was issued, the police unions sued, and the directive is still being fought by the police unions. Attorney General Greewall has conceded that New Jersey needs to end that that current status. And so with that, we should be a national leader on this issue, and I would agree from Highland Park families' perspective. Earlier today, March 2nd, New Jersey Supreme Court heard oral arguments for the case involving the AG's directive. The AG's own brief for this case reads, "Recent events have led the AG to find that the internal affairs policy and procedures did not go far enough in building trust with the broader public. States across the country have begun responding to these calls for reform. Long before the killing of George Floyd, roughly half of states already made police discipline available to the public in some form or fashion." So New Jersey is behind, and at least a dozen, that was my word, sorry, New Jersey is behind, at least a dozen made internal affairs records available with little qualification," end quote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right.
Okay.
For the record to show, I now know how to make someone not a panelist after I make them one. I'm very proud.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on with the rest of the agenda at this point. There will be another open public session a little bit later. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations?
Oh, move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, could you please report on advertising the capital ordinance for improvements to South Sixth Avenue, South Ninth Avenue, North Ninth Avenue, Benner Street, and Barnard Street for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to South Sixth, South Ninth, North Ninth, Benner Street, and Bernard Street in the County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $475,000 to pay the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing?
Oh, I guess we should ask people to raise their hands if we want to.
If anybody wants to speak on this, please raise your hand.
I see no hands raised here.
Very good. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
I recuse myself.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, could you please report on advertising the capital ordinance for improvements to North Tenth Avenue, South Tenth Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Alcazar Avenue, and Aurora Street for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to North Tenth, South Tenth, Lexington, Alcazar, and Aurora Street in the County of Middlesex, appropriating $435,225 to pay the cost, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, if anyone, we're up to the public hearing on this, if anyone would like to speak?
No, you need a motion to take it up on final.
Okay, thank you. Then may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing?
I, I do not see any hands raised here.
Okay, then may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise this ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, clerk, could you please report on introduction of bond ordinance amending bond ordinance number 1968 to provide for the appropriation of a New Jersey Department of Transportation FY 20149 Municipal Aid Grant?
Bond ordinance amending bond ordinance 1968, providing for the appropriation of a new NJDOT grant in the amount of $596,550, and a reduction in the amount of prior NJDOT grants, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and schedule and advertise this ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on the introduction of a capital ordinance for Phase II intersection safety improvements in the borough of Highland Park as funded by the New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Grant?
Capital ordinance providing for Phase II intersection safety improvements in the borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, appropriating $250,000 to pay the cost, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just to note that this amendment is actually to make allowance for the grant which we received. Thank you, Councilwoman Wilkowitz. Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt item numbers 15A through 15H?
So moved. Can we, I would like to speak on 15. I just lost my place, sorry. The one that everybody's been calling the one, I just had it. Hmm, da-da-da. Oh, okay, that's 16.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we had a first and a second, so may I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt the amended rules of order for 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject resolution in support of Senate Bill Number 2656, Assembly Bill Number 5301, that requires access to law enforcement disciplinary records as government records?
Motion to adopt, and I would like to have a comment on it before it goes further. And as
Just one second, Elsie. So we have a second? Okay, Elsie, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, I do. In our last, in our last working session, well, what I should say first, this was moved by the Mayor's Equity Commission Group, and they strongly recommended that we move this forward. So it got onto the, to our working session, and we spoke about it, not only in public safety, but we also spoke about it in our working session last meeting. And there were parts of it that we were concerned with, especially the part that we didn't have a name for it at that time. And it was called "When People Called In and Make Nuisance Claims." And that was, for me, was a big stumbling block, where people would call in, and they wanted us to fill a particular officer's jacket with a bunch of nuisance claim. And that was one of the bigger concerns for me, that, you know, to be fair to everyone across the board. Since then, the mayor has met with the prosecutor and on a Zoom call, and along with the Attorney General on a Zoom call. And there is now a name for it. It's called vexed litigation. We did not have a name for it before, but that's something that they have been concerned with as well. And they have been looking into, and they are going to be putting, not, the resolution will stand as it is, but there will be an accompanying letter for them to look at this vexed litigation piece, letter accompanying what that we're going to be voting on tonight. And to me, that was really important, that that part of what we voted on, that we should have some kind of consideration or something to accompany as we sign on to this, that there will not be abuse on any side. We don't want to see people who have made it their responsibility or their oath to say that this is what they're going to, they're going to do to make sure they complete a whole docket on a particular officer, that that is going to be looked into, and that will be considered when this whole vexed litigation piece will be, something will say something towards that. So with that said, I am quite comfortable to move forward with this, and I wholeheartedly vote yes.
Okay, so, borough clerk, would you like to go through the roll call on this?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I also have a comment. I believe, and I have been doing this 40 years, including being an assistant county prosecutor in charge of internal affairs many years ago. I believe that it's time that we change. I don't believe that vexatious litigation will ever change. People will always do that. My concerns are the lack of thoughtful coordination of other confidentiality provisions such as domestic violence. Many complaints, and I do this for a living, come from an officer responding in a very tense and very difficult situation. situation in domestic violence, uh, which has its own confidentiality rules in, in, in the criminal code. Um, in addition, uh, someone mentioned the issue of fitness for duty. Um, there are actually cases pending to challenge that, saying that is not a medical record, but a qualification of the position. Um, I don't oppose it. I think it's time to change. John Valeri mentioned the honesty question. Prosecutors now maintain what's called a Giglio list, named after a Supreme Court case, of all officers who are convicted of any offense that involves, uh, uh, honesty, moral turpitude, or, or discipline for it, and they have to give that out as discovery. My concerns are, are that some of these confidentiality issues are, are not fully addressed, such as the identity of juveniles. You're releasing body cam footage, and if you've ever watched them, uh, the, the officer approaches a house, there's the address. He, first he interviews the, the, the people answering the door, and often it's a child. There's the child. And the first thing he asks is, what's your name? What's going on? I agree that they have to be released, but I think that confidentiality needs to be addressed a little more fully. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, I vote unequivocally, unequivocally yes. Um, and I just want to say, you know, I'm an advocate by day, uh, you know, working in the legislature, moving mountains is really, really hard work. Um, but what's easy, I think, for us as a council is just being out in front, uh, and doing what's right. So absolutely, yes, we have to do this. And, um, uh, and now on to, uh, our Assembly Representatives to take this resolution and use it as an advocacy point. And thank you to everybody who spoke up in favor of this.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Um, like I had said also in the work session, I think the real core behind this, uh, Senate bill is to really show the public is long, along with the governing body, can you guys hear me?
We hear something in the background.
Hold on. Sorry, my TV room and my husband, sorry, is right next to each other. Um, you may miss my train of, um, uh, to, to show the governing body, our, um, the bad apples that are in police departments across the nation. Um, and that's something, it's, it's one, is one thing for a local government to paint murals all summer long with Black Lives Matter, and there's a difference when actual legislation and, you know, time to really make hardcore change and that we accept those changes and we move forward. And I am, I'm actually shocked and also happy at the same time that we are actually, uh, voting on, uh, supporting this resolution. And I hope we continue to, uh, you know, just keep our, keep our ears and eyes open and, uh, yes.
Okay, thank you all. And Borough Attorney, you, you will, um, address some of the issues that Councilwoman Foster raised in the beginning.
I, I forgot to say, well, my, that's where I was going, what I was trying to thought. Um, can the cover letter be, uh, circulated amongst the council before it's, uh, gone out? Thank you.
Excuse me? Yes. I, I lost power. I'm on the Edison grid and I am in a blackout, so I'm on my phone, but it may die. So I just want to let you know that's what happened, and I may not be here the whole time.
Tara, is it the whole neighborhood?
I'm on Crow's Road.
Is it your neighborhood?
It's just my stuff. We're on the Edison, we're on Crow's Road, but we're on the Edison's grid. So I'm, my complex is completely out.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. All right. Well, you, you look well lit there, Tara.
That's the computer lighting.
When the battery's gone.
If you need to charge, you can stop by my house and get all charged up.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right.
Tara, shut the door.
Borough Attorney, uh, you'll draft that letter and, uh, we, we will, uh, get this thing going.
We'll circulate it this week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject res- the resolution opposing the passage of A 1571 and 1576?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, before we go on, Councilman Hale, did you want to talk to this?
Just, just briefly, I, I, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that as the resolution is written, that this is not the, the, um, Assembly Bill 1571 and 1576 is a, uh, an attempt by the, the legislature to expand, um, the types of projects where prevailing wages are paid. So it lowers the threshold of, of prevailing wage projects, and it requires that prevailing wages be paid for all pilot agreements. And I want to make it absolutely 100% clear that, that I, and I, I believe many on the council, are very much in favor of prevailing wages. We should be paying good wages, um, for good union work. And so we're all very much in favor of, um, of supporting prevailing wages. The problem is that this bill particularly will have dramatic and, um, and dire things for small towns like Highland Park. Um, and it's, it's a pretty simple math calculus is why we're pretty convinced about that. If you are lowering the, uh, size of, of buildings that are required to pay prevailing wages, um, it means that, um, you're going to be paying prevailing wages on, on smaller apartment buildings and smaller units. Um, uh, and, and that's much more cost, uh, inefficient. So if you're building 500 units and you're paying prevailing wages, you can spread the prevailing wage costs across all 500 units. If you're building 30 units, it's much more difficult to do that. And as a result, um, the types of developments that are, we're looking at in Highland Park, the smaller ones, the 30, the 40, or even the 50 units are going to be much, much more expensive. When you tack on the idea that pilot agreements are also going to be subject to prevailing wages, that's a double hit, because that one in particular means that there's going to be less affordable housing. One of the primary reasons that municipalities use pilot agreements is to encourage or leverage developers into building more affordable housing units. And if you, if you are, are, are creating a system where the labor costs are going to go up, they're going to counteract any potential benefits in the initial stage of a, a project, um, that has a pilot agreement. So therefore, they're not going to get done. So that means that it's going to be much more difficult for municipalities to, um, twist and to say to, to, to developers, we want affordable housing. We have a commitment in this borough to affordable housing. We have said that again and again for all new developments, we will meet and exceed our affordable housing requirements, not because it's, we have to, but because it's the right thing to do. We need all of the tools in our bucket in order to make that happen. Um, we need to be, uh, nimble and quick, and we need to, and we need to make sure that, that we can do the types of agreements that will bring a more affordable housing, um, to Highland Park. Um, so I just think it's really important to recognize that I don't believe any of the council members, or certainly I, I don't, I'm not saying that prevailing wage laws are bad or unions are bad by any stretch. We in fact believe wholeheartedly in, in union labor. But when you're stuck, stuck in a situation of being a small town with limited development opportunities, um, this bill particularly hurts our town. And so in that calculus, I'll pick Highland Park any day of the week. So I, I, I do hope that it's clear that we are, um, against this bill, or the, the, the point of this bill is not to make an argument, um, against prevailing wages. It isn't to make an argument for more affordable housing and for developments in small towns like Highland Park.
Okay, and I would just add to that, Councilman Hale. Um, uh, so everyone knows, I've been on the phone in, in different meetings with mayors from across the state, and we are all very much, um, opposed to this legislation because of just the things that the Councilman, that Councilman Hale just said. Um, the impact in particular that this will have on Highland Park being able to, um, stay committed to its, uh, or, its ordinance that calls for specific percentages of affordable housing in any new development would be severely handicapped. And, and we just can't let that happen. So, um, Borough Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Councilwoman Canavera?
She's muted. She may be frozen.
She may be frozen, yeah.
Tara, you're muted.
I'm mute. Sorry. Um, no.
Councilwoman Foster?
Do you care what was said? Because I was thrown off the, the thing, I froze. So because I'm not 100% on this, I'm abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Okay.
Councilman George?
Uh, I'd have liked to echo, uh, Councilman Hale's comments. This is not a, a vote for something good. This is the lesser of two evils vote. Um, I'm committed to equitable and sustainable living wages. Years ago, John Erickson and I proposed a $15 an hour, the $15 an hour wage in Highland Park many, many years ago. Um, but the lesser of two evils is that, as the mayor and Councilman Hale say, the small towns that don't get all the big gimme deals, that don't have the wherewithal, uh, the assets to make public partner, uh, private partnership deals, uh, P3 deals that work, really only have small incentives to try and accomplish what we all need to happen, which is, uh, available, affordable, sustainable housing, equitable wages, and the ability for a diverse community to actually survive and live, uh, uh, on a working wage and in a working family. But the lesser of two evils is to oppose this bill because it really does, as Councilman Hale says, it removes about the only tool we have. Um, and quite frankly, without that tool, we really are challenged to bring developers into town when we have absolutely no commercial or industrial development that's really available. Uh, we need this tool. Other small towns like us need this tool where we are not redevelopment targets, um, where we're old infrastructure. Uh, so the lesser of two evils is to oppose this bill. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Stan.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. We're up to the second public participation portion of our meeting. Um, if there's anyone who would like to speak on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not, please raise your hand, um, or by pressing star nine on your phone keypad, or select the raise hand button on the application. The Borough, Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name and the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Borough Administrator, please announce our first speaker.
Sure, we've got 14 attendees and one hand raised. I see Charlie Cradaville. Please state your name and address.
Yes, good evening, members of the council. Charlie Cradaville, um, with Food and Water Watch. I'm our central Jersey organizer. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. Wanted to follow up on my comments at your prior meeting. I'll begin by thanking the BA for responding to my questions about your initial bidding process on the renewable energy aggregation. Um, I was able to attend the most recent Sustainable Highland Park meeting last week, and, uh, there's a consensus there on the need to modify the ordinance that you adopted last summer. So I'm here to urge you to include, uh, meaningful renewable standards, uh, that would move the borough to 100% renewable energy by 2030. And, um, also wanted to kindly remind you that your neighbors in Edison are presently moving forward with our model ordinance. And, uh, uh, you know, now would be a great time to collaborate and see if there's an opportunity there to, um, you know, work together on this. And finally, wanted to just follow up about the, um, opportunity to meet with, uh, you, Mr. Council President. Um, was, uh, hoping that we could, uh, find the time for you to, to meet with, uh, myself and, and a couple of our members that live in Highland Park. Um, if that's possible, maybe between now and the, and the next council meeting. Would you be able to do that?
Uh, I'll see what the schedule is. Uh, unfortunately, it is very bad at the present time. Uh, but I, I will see if we can do that and also talk to the, uh, Administrator about it as well, because, uh, we have a common interest in, uh, in, in the planning of that itself.
Great, great.
I unfortunately had a meeting, uh, last week, and I tried to tune in, I guess, about five minutes after the sustainable meeting was over.
Okay, cool. Well, I just want to make sure you, are, are you getting my emails?
I am, thank you.
Okay, cool. Well, look forward to hearing back and, and getting to meet with you soon. Have a good night, everyone.
Night, Charlie. And, um, Council President and Borough Administrator, the ordinance that Charlie was referring to, um, which probably needs to be updated, would you take that out and take a look at it and see what needs to be updated to come to 2021 standards, please?
Mayor, just to be clear, we passed it last year, so it's not like super crusty old.
Yeah.
Where it's got the latest information in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I already sent it to our consultant too, for their two cents.
Okay.
Yes, we're moving forward with that.
Very good. Okay, um, any other speakers?
I see one other hand, Mayor. I, I, looks like John Valeri. Please state your name and address again.
Uh, yes, John Valeri, 106 South Sixth Avenue. Um, this is actually a crazy question, but I'm going to ask it anyway, because I remember this, e- even though these, I mean, the coronavirus pandemic, you know, legitimately started last year. And I remember years ago, with the flu vaccines, the town was giving, the borough was giving it away to, uh, different residents. Is there a possibility we can do the same thing with the coronavirus vaccine in town? Because it's great that we are, um, what's it called? Uh, that our cases went down, but getting appointments for this, you know, vaccine is just obnoxious. You can't even get an appointment. I'm high risk. I'm an essential worker. I'm not going to mention my job because I'm not allowed to on social media. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we gotta find a way to like, get us, you know, vaccinated even in town. If we could do the same thing like we did with the flu vaccine with the coronavirus vaccine, is there a possibility that could happen?
So I can speak to that, John. Um, we have been trying desperately to get, um, more vaccinations, um, in, in town. Um, right now, the Rite Aid in Highland Park is the closest, um, in-town vaccinator. Um, however, there are, um, two groups in town that have been working with residents to help them get appointments. Um, and, uh, the first is our community center. You can feel free to reach out, um, to Kim Perkins McGraw there. Um, she's been working with residents to get, um, appointments set up. And, um, the second is a group of volunteers, um, spearheaded by Abby Stern-Cordial. Um, and, uh, there's a bunch of other people working with her. Um, the best way to connect with Abby, I believe, is through Facebook.
Yeah, well, her and I are friends on Facebook, so.
So reach out to her. She's been working miracles in getting people appointments.
Well, that, that's good, that's good to know, because like I said, I'm high risk. I have high blood pressure, and I am an essential worker, and I'm not going to mention my essential job, because I actually had to sign a waiver at my part-time job, not to mention it on social media. So.
Okay. Well, try those outlets, and if- Okay. Well, try those outlets, and if you're still frustrated, give me a call, John.
Will do, Madam Mittler. Or Madam Mayor, I don't know how to.
It's all right. I get it.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else have a raised hand?
No, Mayor.
Okay, in this case, council, we normally take a five-minute recess before we go into work session. Does anybody want to have that recess, or shall we just go forward?
I would appreciate that. I have to, we have kids issues.
Okay.
I hear screaming upstairs.
All right.
I'm on my third Coca-Cola.
We'll get, we'll come back here in five minutes. Thank you.
Tara, is your power back on?
It has come back on, thank goodness. We were all sitting here in the dark.
Did you get power back?
We did. Thankfully. It wasn't too long.
I'm sorry?
We did. So thankfully, we weren't without power too long.
Okay, I was going to make sure that PSE and G got the service call.
Yeah, I'm on an alert for them, so they actually told, sent me an alert almost immediately after it went out.
Okay, so they did get it. Okay, great.
My husband said that all of Edison was out when they were coming, he was coming home.
Okay. All right, five-minute break. Who's watching hockey?
Joan. I was wondering what I was hearing in the background.
I'm back with power.
All right.
Back with power.
Sometimes it's good being on the Edison grid, sometimes not so much.
That's what they say.
A lot of times, when Highland Park was out, we always had power, but then it's Sandy, we were out longer than Highland Park was.
Yeah.
It's a tried and true, it's a truism of Highland Park. Sometimes being close to Edison ain't so bad.
Oh, I just got a vote in PSE and G. We are responding to an outage in your area. Estimated time of restoration is 11:00 PM.
Well, I'm back on. So hopefully it stays on.
Interesting.
PSE and G responds directly to tweets, by the way, people, for anybody at home. PSE and G delivers. That's the handle. Do you have a problem?
Where did David go? Wasn't he just there?
He was. He went to bed. Passed his bedtime. That was very easy. I have to fight with my 12-year-old nightly to go to bed. David's eight, so I still got a couple of years. Yeah.
Oh, you're going to do?
Is that Joe Biden behind you, Tara? It is. I've been wondering, it's really cool.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Joe Biden.
My daughter, when she was in the middle school, she was in special ed, the class wrote a letter to Joe Biden about gum control.
Okay.
And what I love about it is, not only did he send her the autographed picture, but in the letter he wrote back to her, he actually referenced things that she had in her letter.
Wow.
And then her teacher had them put in the frames, and they were presented it at the, right before their eighth grade graduation.
That's so nice.
It is.
He's such a decent guy.
Yes. Actually, I have another story about him. My brother's best friend moved to Delaware years, this was back in the 80s, and his car broke down going home from work in a snowstorm. He knew nobody in Delaware, so he's walking, and who stops to pick him up? But Joe Biden.
Wow.
So.
It's a good story.
Yeah. So he's a, he's a good man. But yes, that is our now president, that was when he was vice president. So now I told Jared, he has to write.
Sorry, again, I don't get around too fast these days.
I think we're just meeting for Elsie.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, there she is.
I just got off the beach.
Oh, give me a moment.
Did you do a, did you do a blazer change? Did you do an outfit change for?
Nice.
No.
What is this, the Golden Globes?
Very good, Matt, very good.
Let's get back to business here. Let's go on to our work session items. First of all, A was there as a mistake that was held over from the last agenda. So you already voted on A 1571.
Right.
Moving on, snow removal planning, Phil.
Yes, what we did on Public Works is we set up, rather than just engage in conversation and talk about all the comments and talk about all the criticisms, we broke down the major areas into three concerns. One, equipment and manpower and use of that manpower. Two, the snow removal and park car problem. And three, accessibility, in particular, the sidewalk crossings at the crosswalks. Assigned, and Matt Hirsch, Tara and I assigned those out, working with Terry, Mike and Frank from DPW. We also doubled up our Public Works meetings, and the doubled meetings are devoted strictly to snow removal. We had a quick phone touch base today for our meeting on Thursday where we will be bringing together our first round of research, summary of the major points that were made by citizen complaints, citizen comments, citizen thank yous, information from DPW on clearance. Today, I got a full inventory from Mike of, of equipment and suggestions for equipment for discussion. In some ways, that of course turns upon what Matt brings forward with regard to snow clearance problems. And all of this is coordinated through Terry's office in, in order to make sure that communications are clear and that the boroughs and administrators involved in everything. We go through Terry to Mike or Frank or John Satchel at the Police Department if necessary. There'll be liaison with public safety. Once we do our initial assessment, we're looking to make a report to the council through the administrator and DPW by the end of March. So it may not make the March 16 meeting because our meeting is, our final Public Works meeting is after that. But we should have it available by the end of March as to what we found out, what we can do better, what, what, you know, what could we do better in general? What could we have done better on the spot because of whatever particular problem we had, or whatever particular planning we needed to do? And also to make contingencies. I happen to believe, as many do, that this kind of violent storm compared to past years is going to become more commonplace. Most reputable and reliable scientific sources have said the same thing after the storm. So that's how we planned it. We just found that it would be more productive if we specifically targeted areas and specifically studied them. That may leave some pieces out that people would want to hear about, but we generally have covered the most important areas by dividing it up and placing one councilperson in charge of that particular area to bring it forward. And we will start with that on Thursday.
Very good. Anyone have any questions for Phil about this planning?
No, it sounds like a good plan, and thanks for taking it on, and thanks to the committee for taking that on. It's important work, and I like the way that you've structured it, so.
Thanks.
I would just say that, that equipment and staff go across all of those. And so, you know, understanding equipment and staff needs. Because those are things that, that as a whole council can, can work on as well, so. But I do think, I think the structure is good. I'm glad you're dividing it up like that. I think you're taking it seriously, and I really do appreciate that.
One of the interesting things in the equipment area is, we don't need any more big stuff.
Right.
DPW wants the small stuff because that's, now we cross into Tara's area, it's easier to do crosswalks. It's going to cross into your area ultimately because we'll have to make some decisions on public policy as to whether DPW, and ultimately the town, tasks itself with certain responsibilities, particularly downtown and with accessibility. And, and that becomes a matter of public policy that, you know, the ripples go on and on and on. But the work that Matt and Tara are doing right now is the most critical to be able to start a structure to understand what we need to do, what we have, and then we move forward from that, and we make some public policy decisions on how Highland Park wants to access this public work.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. The next topic is accessible parking ordinance amendments. Foster, Councilwoman Foster.
Okay, this one is, we've gotten a number of requests for people who are requesting oh my God, disabled persons parking or handicap parking in front of the certain area. And we have one family that currently, we can't assign a particular handicap parking to anyone, but in this, this particular family, both members of the family is disabled. Both mother and father are disabled, and they really need something that's pretty much in front of their property so they can have access. The, one of them was blind before, the second parent now is now blind, so they really need help and assistance to get back and forth. And this is why we want to make sure that they will be able to have a handicap parking area accessible to them, pretty much in front of their home. Although we can't say this is yours, but we'll want to make it accessible and available to them.
So, Elsie, in the past, when we first came up with this, we were working very closely with universal access on it. Are they involved with you in this?
No, I got this concern, I got this urgent concern the other day where they were requesting some kind, an emergency need because of the most recent situation that occurred in this family. I did not speak with universal access in regards to this.
Yeah.
Terry does have something to add.
I, I guess, I just didn't want to let this go, but Mayor, I don't mean to cut you off.
I, I just want to ask Tara if she can update the universal act, who has help? It is you, Tara. Okay. Universal Access Committee on this and see if they have any input so that, as Elsie's working on this with the Police Department, she covers anything that might have come up with universal access. I know over the years, the reason I bring this up, Elsie, is over the years we have often had people come to us asking about additional accessible parking spaces. And, you know, if you're going to be redoing the ordinance, now might be a time to get their input on any other additions or changes to that ordinance that they need.
Terry also has something to add.
Yeah, I just, it's exactly the point you were just making, Mayor. Elsie, I don't know, I hope we didn't get our wires crossed. I was looking at, when we put this on the agenda, it was regarding a matter that the memo that was circulated from Lieutenant Satchel was on the line. And so he identified one spot, but it actually dates back to last year, so I'm not sure if you have another spot that you're looking at. The spot that he wrote about in his memo was reviewed with, then, I don't know if you were on council yet, Tara, or not, but you were on universal access at that time. It was reviewed, and he also, while he was looking at that, did a survey of a bunch of the spots, and he identified, I would, several locations to remove because the spots aren't even really there anymore, but they're still on the ordinance. So that way it would free up opportunities in other parts of town, because the way our ordinance works, as I understand it, there's a kind of goes by voting district, and there's a certain amount per voting district. So there was a cleanup, and in his memo, he articulates those items as well. So I would, I would hope if we're going to take on this new spot, we would also do that cleanup that you were referring to as the lieutenant did this work last year, and I think it was just an oversight that we didn't get to the ordinance component until now. So I think we have everything, and I believe if, if I am understanding the memo, and if the lieutenant wants to jump in, but that it went through universal access.
I, could Lieutenant Satchel, please come on the line and speak about this? Because you were the one who did all the research on it and found out what needs to be added, what needs to be removed?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so it does sound like we're talking about the same request, application for accessible parking. It was never, for whatever reason, there was a misunderstanding because there was two separate issues. One was an ordinance cleanup to remove handicap from the local ordinances, replace it with accessible. And apparently there was a misunderstanding where, right around the same time, I had forwarded a memo regarding the cleanup language of the regarding the parking spaces with, you know, what's no longer, what parking spaces are no longer present in town, however, they were still listed in the ordinance and along with the application. present in town, however, they were still listed in the ordinance and, um, along with the application for a new space, um, for the folks that you mentioned. And also a revision whereby one of the parking spaces that we have on the box was listed in the incorrect, uh, voting district. So I, I sought to clarify that as well.
All right, so who's gonna coordinate all of this? Tara?
I do know that when I was the chair for universal access and John did bring this to our attention, another thing that was brought up was coming to the council because right now it's two spots per voting district. But, and John, you can clarify if I'm wrong, but I believe there's some districts that don't, aren't using any. But there's other districts that need more. So one of the things we wanted to think about changing in the ordinance is that if it's not being used someplace else, to let it be used in another district if we have the need.
Yeah, absolutely.
It sounds to me that like, um, we need to have some coordination between universal access and public safety on this. Um, and John, are you still serving on both? Are you still on universal access?
I am on universal access and now SWAC.
All right, so, so, um, do you mind being the connecting piece between public safety and universal access?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. I think, I think part of the, the confusion here was that you know, because I did bring this up, in fact, I don't believe Tara was even on council when this came up, uh, the first time. And, you know, she, she's awesome, she, I would always go to her when she was the head, the civilian head of the, um, universal access, uh, you know, just to run something past her that, you know, I wanted advice on, which, which way do you think we should head? So she was always great and it, it's awesome that she made it onto council and, and now she's back with, uh, universal access. So, uh, it was, it was something that we had previously discussed. I think part of the issue was that recently this, this came about where we actually discovered and, uh, I believe the chief at that point forwarded it to, uh, Councilwoman Foster. I'm sorry, Joan, uh, forwarded it to Councilwoman Foster so that we could quickly get it, uh, on the agenda for this meeting. Or ordinarily, I don't believe that there would have been this confusion. It just happened to be that there was two ordinances in, uh, two different amendments that were being sought and I don't think that one, one group knew that, that there was another group involved. There, there was two, um, two different languages spoken there.
Just one second, Elsie. When, when you do coordinate the efforts between uh, public safety and universal access, I think it's important for us to understand how often these spots change so that the language in whatever ordinance you're putting together, and I suppose this involves you, Mr. Schmier as well, does accommodate for a regular review of the number of spots and where they are and how often it should be updated and addressed.
Sounds good. Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Um, technically it's in the ordinance right now. I believe there's thirteen voting districts. You know, I can't think of any, um, spaces that are on the north side of town, north of, of Route twenty-seven. So that, you know, if we were to do something, make a modification, you know, presumably there, there could be a lot more added to the south side of town. There's, uh, you know, I've had a few requests in the triangle. Overall, I would say that, you know, even on the south side of town, there are plenty of voting districts where there are vacancies. There's probably only a dozen or so of these parking spaces that we have on the box.
Okay, all right, and Councilwoman Foster, you wanted to say something?
John, I'm gonna follow up with you with that. Uh, we'll take it offline. We're having a public safety meeting coming up on Thursday, so we, we can discuss that there.
Perfect.
And I'll, I'll tap into Tara as well, so.
Okay, very good.
What we need to look at and make whatever adjustment that needs to be made and along with tapping into Ed, once we put everything together.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
So, okay, I know there was a lot of discussion about, a lot of stuff. But, um, my concern is for those two residents, especially now with the snow and everything going on. So do they have to wait for all of these committees and meetings or is it gonna be on the next agenda?
Elsie, you want to speak to that?
Well, I think with the, with the emerge, the emergency need, I think that will be addressed. Make sure that the emergency need is addressed. Because that's something that we're gonna sit and debate over. It can't wait till the next meeting that we're having on the ninth or whatever it is. So that's gonna be addressed.
Okay, so they'll be able, cause you know, there's still some, some people are only still parking on one side. There's still some piles of snow getting smaller, but I just.
It, it'll be addressed.
Okay.
Make sure that it, it gets a proper attention.
All right.
Have access to it. As I said before, I want to be very, very clear. We can't designate a handicap parking for someone. And that, um, that is something that I, I double want to double underscore because people tend to think that this is my spot. If somebody comes in from out of town and, and somebody who uses it that has a decal, that's how it goes. But we can't designate a spot to any, any particular resident.
Tara, you raising your hand?
Elsie, what time is your meeting on Thursday? Is it okay with you if I come?
Yes, I'm gonna send you an invite.
Okay, and it, it, once we do that, I can reach out to Commission of Universal Access so that everything can get fast tracked instead of waiting for their meeting.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you.
And I just want to make it, uh, ask you a question if there are going to be four council members at a meeting. Is there anything?
We should ask that it be three. We'd have to notice that.
She doesn't have to be in on that meeting, I will meet with her.
Okay. Just want to keep everything legit.
Yes, I wasn't thinking of that, sorry.
Okay.
That's why I say I would meet, I would take it offline.
Okay, all right, then, uh, does anyone have anything they want to address on their goals?
Uh, moving forward, the electric vehicle ordinance, uh, we had some discussions with residents. One in particular is very much of interest, someone who has an electric vehicle but no driveway. And that's one of the things that we were seeking to address. Uh, and one of the things that a technical person had proposed five years ago doing a project with P S E and G, who is a much more friendly partner of ours now. I think might be, uh, actually might be viable. I'm trying to find the old email with the contacts on it. Now unfortunately, the one scratch folder that I write everything down on has gone the way of the dodo, so I have to find electronically, which was much more difficult. Uh, but, um, I, I want to get that down to, uh, to Terry. I think you might have it, but I think it's just nothing major. It's just something, you know, sections of the zoning code where for the primary issue is the, um, making it, uh, an accessory use in properties. Right now it's not. So it actually would require a variance if it was not inside the garage. And, uh, that email that we got this week from the resident who has an electric vehicle with no charging space, it has to come and use the public charging space to charge his car. That's something we have to address. There's gonna be Volvo's not gonna sell them anymore, Ford's not gonna sell them anymore. People aren't gonna buy them anymore. I'm looking at an electric vehicle for my next car. This is something we gotta do. Not the MG though, I'm keeping that.
So the, and yeah, Phil is correct, and the problem with the public chargers, superchargers or whatever, it drains the battery faster because you're charging the car. So it's, it's actually you're defeating the purpose, so.
Although I would pitch our, our level two behind Borough Hall does not do that, Stephanie, but it's So don't, I just want to make sure it's not a level three. The level three, you gotta be a little careful with.
No, Stephanie's right, you're saying the level threes are more convenient for people on the highways, you know, like you try and stop at the gas station when you're taking a long trip, but they're not the best solution, you know, for commuting and coming home and charging at night. She's right. We need, we need.
It's like that old saying, that old saying, do you want it fast, cheap or good? Pick two.
Right, there you go.
Yeah. All right then.
I just, I just wanted to raise one thing, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor. At, at our SWAC meeting, as I kind of try to get, you know, all caught up with, with uh, and I've spoken to Terry a few times about this too, but, um, at our SWAC meeting, we had a fairly extensive conversation about the, um, about the, uh, uh, trail connector between Donaldson and, uh, and Johnson. And I, I really want to, I just really want to prioritize that as a, as a goal and really keep the momentum going there. And I, um, I'm gonna, I need to catch up with Terry, but you know, really putting, you know, working backward, um, and establishing, um, deadlines for, you know, whatever steps that you need to take.
If I may.
And Matt, if you.
Hang on, hang on.
I haven't, I haven't started anything, but I'm just saying that that's, you know, we need to stay on, on track with that.
Terry, um, have you talked with Matt at all about what we're submitting, that second, um, possible?
No, but I did mention my conversation with Trish earlier, which might be what prompted him to.
Oh, okay, good.
So I.
No, I was just reporting. I, I, I leave, I leave stuff out of my council reports now if I don't, if there's nothing to really talk about. But that was, it was a long.
Yeah, talk to Terry about it. Like, not now, but.
Something happened with my portfolio that I don't know about, okay?
In the last like fifteen minutes, I mean, like literally this afternoon, that's why I was talking to Trish.
Out of my hands then, go ahead.
I don't know, it's a good thing.
All right.
And Matt, just to echo on that, this is, this is an economic development opportunity as well. And so anything that they, that, that we can do from a, from that perspective for this trail, I think is a huge thing. So I know that there's a lot of people who want to be involved in this, so let's get it going.
I mean, whoever, you know, whoever puts, whoever that was, you know, was, uh, what wise minds put together the organization chart, and I'm not being facetious, it actually flows really, really well. Because, you know, we talk about public safety and snow removal. You know, me representing SWAC and Tara representing, uh, uh, universal access and then economic development, which I'm a member of, you know, and SWAC obviously is very clearly, uh, strong, strong in the economic development domain, and so.
Matt, it didn't happen by accident.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, thank you.
To, to follow up on what Matt had to say. The Environmental Commission had also been raising this since, uh, basically since October. And Matt Hale and I have discussed several times the, uh, uh, the concepts, uh, in Jim Fallows' book, Our Towns, about what makes a successful small town redevelopment. Jonathan at the Environmental Commission located the nineteen ninety-five overall trails proposal which was done by the state and the county as well. He dropped it off last weekend. It's about seventy pages, so I have to scan it in bits. So the Environmental Commission wanted it sep, uh, you know, circulated to them. We did find it. I'm going to scan it as soon as I can get to it over the weekend and I'll get a copy over to Matt as well.
Good.
Matt, make sure that those trails are accessible to everyone.
I think we all will, I think.
Watch the wind.
Well, well lit and accessible.
If I have my say, make sure it's at a good price.
By two minute, by, by two minutes options, no, I don't know.
We'll have a boat landing as well.
Yeah, absolutely. What did I just say about the fast, cheap or good? Pick two.
Yeah. Thank you, and, and yeah, I, again, I know that there's been a ton of work on this, um, and, um, I'm just trying to get caught up, so I just wanted to kind of raise that up.
Yeah. All right, so our next scheduled meeting is for March sixteenth. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.